Here.
Claudia Bitterman?
Here.
John Maston?
Here.
At this time, please join me in a moment of silent prayer for private reflection. Amen. At this time, please join me with a moment of pledge of allegiance to the Creator.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
2.1, Human Resources: Recognition of Continuing Teachers. I'll call Dr. Festa Dagel to do the recognitions. Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Bitterman.
Yeah, Mrs. Bitterman, woo!
Thank you, Ms. Dr.
Thank you all for joining us tonight. My name is Lindsay Bitterman. I'm your Human Resources Director. Tonight, we come together to celebrate the culmination of dedication, hard work, and unwavering commitment to the noblest of professions. We wholeheartedly believe that teaching is not merely a job, but a lifelong mission to shape young minds and inspire future generations. As we gather here, we celebrate those who have completed three years of teaching, transitioning from the probationary stage to the status of continuing teacher. Yay! This achievement, while often understated in its significance, marks a transition from promising novices to experienced practitioners in the art of education. In an era where the teaching profession faces unique challenges and demands, it is essential to recognize the remarkable accomplishment of these individuals. Nationally, statistics remind us that only two-thirds of those who set out on this path find themselves standing here before us tonight, having weathered the storm of those critical initial years. And why is the recognition of this accomplishment so vital? The positive influence of experienced educators is immeasurable and undeniable. Research consistently underscores the profound impact of teacher experience on student achievement outcomes, and we'll get to celebrate that with Dr. Festa Dagel in a little bit. We also reviewed a seminal study conducted by the Learning Policy Institute that revealed that student achievement more than tripled between a teacher's first year in the classroom compared to their first. This remarkable growth in student achievement marks a defining moment in any educator's career, a testament to the dedication that each one of our honorees has demonstrated. Yet, the impact of these educators extends far beyond test scores. Students under the guidance of experienced teachers display a marked reduction in disciplinary referrals and an uptick in attendance rates. Tonight, we celebrate not just the culmination of three years of teaching, but the continuation of a journey that promises to enrich the lives of countless students for years to come. We extend our heartfelt gratitude to these outstanding educators for their profound contributions to our students' growth, and we eagerly anticipate the chapters they will continue to write in their story of education. When I call you up, educators, I'm going to ask that you remain standing so we can recognize you. We will start with Judy Barrett, and I don't know if anyone's still in the lobby. Judy Barrett? I don't think she was able to make it. Ms. Barrett is known for being a resource teacher at Havasu High Elementary, where she champions not just her students, but all students. Next up, Ms. Hannah Towns. Ms. Towns is a first-grade teacher and exceptional educator at Havasu High Elementary School, where she is known for her leadership and innovative teaching methods. Ms. Carrie Clark from Jamaica Elementary. Ms. Clark inspires creativity by having students sing, play, and draw in her art and music classes. Ms. Erica Crook from Jamaica Elementary. Here she comes. Come on, all the way up. Yep. We'll have you take this and then just ride on down by Mr. Murray. Ms. Crook began her teaching journey with second graders before transitioning to fourth grade last year, where she taught science and social studies. This year, she is focused on engaging her students in math and science. She has also served as the co-advisor for the Kindness Club, where she fosters a positive school environment. Her dedication and commitment to lifelong learning create a supportive and engaging learning environment for her students. Mrs. Rodriguez from Jamaica Elementary. Mrs. Rodriguez, a dedicated sixth-grade ELA and social studies teacher, is also pursuing her master's degree in reading intervention to better support her students' literacy development. As a co-advisor for StuCo and the Jet Travel Club, she fosters leadership and adventure, creating a well-rounded educational experience. Her commitment to professional growth and extracurricular engagement enriches her classroom and inspires her students. Mrs. Smith, Jamaica Elementary. Mrs. Smith recently transitioned from first grade to kindergarten, and she attended a conference this summer on Elevator Classroom. Next, Mrs. Kroll from Lake Havasu High School. When Mrs. Kroll accepted her position as music and audio teacher at Lake Havasu High School, we were so excited she came to us with much admiration. Though her time at LHHS is just starting, as she previously worked at Nautilus in Ora Grande, she is making an impact on the students and staff in her pursuit of the job and doing it in the right way. Lake Havasu High School students are lucky to have her as a teacher. She will continue to do great things for them. And Mrs. Magbago from Lake Havasu High School. As a math teacher at Lake Havasu High School, Mrs. Magbago has greatly impacted her students and their math skills. Mrs. Magbago serves to never have a bad day, which is evident in the smile she greets everyone with on a daily basis. She is a significant attribute to the Lake Havasu High School math department and the school community. Mrs. Pachardo. I don't think she's here tonight. Mrs. Pachardo is one of our Spanish teachers at Lake Havasu High School. The students are lucky to have her for her caring, individual approach to educating each of them every day. Mrs. Batson from Nautilus Elementary. It takes a special person like Mrs. Batson to nurture the curiosity and creativity of young minds at Nautilus. Teaching kindergarten is truly an act of love and patience. Mrs. Batson is passionate about teaching students to sound out their first words and eventually read complete sentences. Her dedication to the Nautilus students will leave an lasting impact. Mrs. Powers from Nautilus Elementary. Mrs. Powers, a special education teacher at Nautilus, is an extraordinary individual who possesses a deep well of compassion, patience, and resilience. She dedicates herself to understanding and supporting the unique needs of our students. She also serves on the Sunshine and PBIS committees and helps facilitate National Elementary Honor Society. Mrs. Powers is a true advocate and champion for students and their families. Ms. Luther from Ora Grande Classical Academy. Ms. Luther is a fourth-grade teacher at Ora Grande Classical Academy. She is new this year to the academy from Jamaica Elementary. It is clear to see that Ms. Luther's drive for her students with a disciplined culture and her great ability to engage students and depth of knowledge has helped her students grow in their grammar, language, and academic vocabulary. Ora Grande Classical Academy is extremely fortunate to have Ms. Luther's exceptional talent in fourth grade. Mrs. Nelson is a second-grade teacher at Ora Grande Classical Academy, a Lake Havasu High School alum, and the reigning district rookie Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Nelson's classroom is founded on the academy's virtues of friendship, wonder, temperance, fortitude, and prudence. Her students are cared for, and as she personally strives to prioritize their well-being so they can take on challenging tasks in academia and daily citizenship. Mrs. Arzadi. Mrs. Arzadi is a fourth-grade teacher from Smoke Tree Elementary. She is known for working as an after-school tutor, leading the spelling bee, and also teaching summer school. Mr. De La Cruz is a sixth-grade science and social studies teacher at Smoke Tree Elementary. He has been recognized for his achievements as an exemplary science teacher, as a STEM leader in our district, and works diligently to support new teachers. This year, he is working to build a STEM curriculum for our school and to help train staff in implementing STEM lessons. Mr. Humag Bass, affectionately known as Mr. J. is a fifth-grade teacher at Smoke Tree. Mr. J is a collaborative team player who serves as an after-school tutor and helps with the STEM club. This year, he is starting a performing arts club to help nurture and showcase the many talented students we have at Smoke Tree Elementary. Mrs. Lance is a preschool teacher. She works at Smoke Tree's Cub House. She is a delight to have to any team. She is always positive and solution-focused. Mrs. Hooky, fourth grade at Starline. Mrs. Hooky is a National Board candidate and technology lead, as well as a Lighthouse Committee member. Mrs. Kazmi, a fifth-grade teacher at Starline. Mrs. Kazmi is an after-school tutor and advisor and our current team lead. More so, she is a light for students and staff with a bright smile, warm demeanor, and loving approach with her colleagues, children, and families. We are so happy she has chosen Starline and LHUSD as her home. Ms. Melly. Mrs. Melly. Mrs. Melly is a fourth-grade teacher at, you guessed it, Starline? Where she teaches social studies and the science curriculum. She is committed to using the new leader in me inside of her classroom. Mrs. Walgren, Starline Elementary. Ms. Walgren is a first-grade teacher and LHHS alum, an early childhood alum, and a current National Board candidate. Mrs. Young. She has recently transitioned from fifth-grade to third-grade teacher at Starline Elementary. Her specialty is events and making her classroom a lovely and more effective place for everyone. And last but not least, Mrs. Severson from Thunderbolt Middle School. Mrs. Severson's experience in CrossFit, combined with the physical education middle school curriculum, has helped our students to continue growing in their health and wellness as they transition to the many high school programs available to them. If we could have all our teachers give a smile and squeeze in as much as you can.
Smile big. Look out for your cane. I'm sorry.
And thank you all for being here to recognize our teachers.
Great recognitions. Now we'll have the second part, is the student achievement. Perfect AASAs and 99th percentile Aspire and ACT scores.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dr. Jamie Festa Dagel. It's so nice that we are all here to celebrate our amazing students' accomplishments and to support their teachers. So we're going to start with perfect scores on the Arizona Assessment of State Academic Standards. And so, we're going to start with third grade. We have, state testing starts in third grade, so we have two students who have perfect math scores. When I call you up, will you stay up for third grade? And will you stay up and wait for your teachers? And then we'll take a picture. If Gina will take a picture, thank you. So from Smoke Tree Elementary, we have Nedved Reynoso. We also have Kaladin Newman. And will their teachers, Ms. Hubbard and Ms. Bridwell, please come up? So now we have a lot of fourth-grade students, all with perfect math scores, so not one wrong answer. First, from Smoke Tree, we have Zian Batka. His teacher was Mrs. Arzadi. And then we have a group of students from Starline Elementary School. Their teacher is Mrs. Nigg. First, we have Gunner Nelson. Next, we have Owen Neal. Levi Wilson. Henry Mills. Joseph Fox. Mrs. Nigg, will you come up with these friends? We also, from Nautilus, have Jace Mummert. And is Ms. Kane here? Okay, so Jace's teacher is Ms. Kane. So can we congratulate these fourth-grade students? Next, in fifth grade, we had two students with perfect scores in English Language Arts. Both of these students are from Smoke Tree. First, we have Irene Lambert. And we also have Robin Pardinas. Their teacher is Ms. Lautherbach. Is Bree here? Their principal, Ms. Mersing, will come and take a picture with them. Congratulations. Congratulations. In sixth grade, we had one student with a perfect score in English Language Arts, Annabelle Carter. And Annabelle's teacher was Ms. Van Poel. I think I saw Luann come in. So next, we have a student who is truly impressive. This student has had a perfect score in fifth grade, sixth grade, and now seventh grade, and in both areas. Hannah Vu. And Hannah, I know Mrs. Bunsing is here. I don't know if Mr. Harrison is here. Congratulations to all of our students who had perfect scores on the AASAs. So now we move to high school. These students scored in the 99th percentile. The first group of students is for the ACT Aspire. So this is an assessment that students take, so you guys are probably familiar with the ACT. It is our state test, but it also serves as a college entrance exam. So the ACT Aspire is the ninth-grade test, and it serves as a predictor of how students will do in 11th grade. We have a number of students who had scored in the 99th percentile in numerous areas. The first student, and I'll ask all the ninth graders to stand and wait for everybody so we can take a picture. The first student is Epic Pesquale. Are you ready for this? Epic had a 99th percentile composite score, English score, reading score, ELA score, math score, and STEM score. Our next student is Jason Washington. Jason had a 99th percentile score in composite, English, science, and STEM. Our next student is Molly Gerald. Molly scored in the 99th percentile for her composite, English, reading, and ELA. Our next student is Jada Hayes. Jada scored in the 100th percentile in reading, 99th percentile in ELA, and 99th percentile in science. The next student, I'm very excited for this student. I taught his mommy in eighth grade, and I love her so much. She was my very famous. Owen Vetter. It's really fun to see him grow up. He scored in the 99th percentile in ELA and math. The next student is Damian Lu. Damian scored in the 99th percentile in science and STEM. The next student is Nikolai Jensen. Nikolai scored in the 100th percentile in reading. The next student is Mary Jane Verent. Mary Jane scored in the 99th percentile in science. The next student is Lila Murphy. Lila scored in the 99th percentile in English. And the next student is Luke Pardinas. So, Ms. Bernier is here with both of her children, well, should be here with both of her children, so another excellent job. Luke scored in the 99th percentile in reading. Congratulations to our ninth graders. Now 10th graders. Just give it to them, and then... Oh, Jaden Meyer. Sorry. Jaden scored in the 99th percentile in science and STEM. I'm so sorry, Jaden. Okay, now we can clap for all of them. The following seniors took the ACT in 11th grade and scored in the 99th percentile in one or more areas. First, we have Jordan Reichardt. Jordan scored a 99th percentile of composite, science, STEM, English, and English Language Arts. Next, we have Caitlin Swartz. Caitlin scored in the 99th percentile for composite, math, science, STEM, English, and reading. Next, we have Luke Nathaniel Jalito. Luke scored in the 99th percentile for composite, math, STEM, and English Language Arts. Next, we have Caitlin Hendrickson. Caitlin scored in the 99th percentile for composite, 100th percentile for English, and 99th percentile for ELA. Next, we have Elan Skinner. Elan Skinner. Thank you, sorry. Elan scored in the 99th percentile for composite, 100th percentile for science, and 99th percentile for STEM. Next, we have Tanner Maisik. Tanner scored in the 99th percentile for math and STEM. Nathaniel Stewart. Nathaniel scored in the 99th percentile for math. Mandy Byleki. Mandy scored in the 99th percentile for math. Keely Lamb. Keely scored in the 99th percentile for math. Jaden Giles. Jaden scored in the 99th percentile for science and STEM. Katherine Thompson. Katherine scored in the 99th percentile for science and English Language Arts. Would you please congratulate our senior students?
Thank you.
And a thank you to all the families and educators and the students. This is an entire team that makes these amazing things happen.
Thank you, everyone, for coming to celebrate these victories. And you're welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting. And if you need to go, we'll give you a minute to clear out. So we'll continue on in just a minute. 2.3 Lake Havasu City Education Association, Carol Noakowski, will now speak at this time.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, directors. Wow, can we just like yay for everybody, families, and teachers and educators, everybody that was involved in all of that? That was amazing. I'm just here to report my monthly update of deadline to register to vote is October 7. Early voting will start, I believe, October 9. And then, of course, we have Election Day November 5. And then we do have a school board candidate forum, October 16, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Lake Havasu High School Performing Arts. So hoping everybody will show up for that. And students that will be 18 by November 5 registered to vote. That'll be all. Unless you have questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. All right, Leanna, do we have any calls to the public? We have one? All right. So first up is Karen Vanderjagt to talk about books in the library. Could you please go to the microphone?
Board and directors, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Karen, we can.
Great. Okay, I was very impressed by the showing, you know, that academics is so important for this district. So tonight I'm addressing something that is what I think the opposite of academics. And it's what's in your library catalog. And I'm going to name some books that are in there. Gay Rights by Kate Burns, Gay Marriage by Laurie Friedman, Straight Parents, Gay Children, Keeping Families Together by Robert Bernstein, Same Sex Marriage: Granting Equal Rights or Damaging the Status of Marriage by Tricia Andressi-Zikey, Homosexuality by David Hoggan and Matthew Box, Now That I'm Out, What Do I Do by a Mr. Knott, McNott. Okay, those are in the library. So I'm here tonight to just say this is not acceptable. Academics is what is important in this district. This is grooming. This is giving a stamp of approval. This is not your job. This is not what we voted our board in for. And I don't know if the board even knows about this. But I'm here to make a suggestion that any books that are going to go into the library need to go through the eyes of our board that we have elected. And I'm just kind of in shock. I don't know if anybody else here is in shock. But this needs to be addressed. I hope in a future meeting that it will be addressed, that there'll be some way to keep this under control. If you think this is okay, all I can say, I'm praying for you, because this is not right. This is, again, stamp of approval. We're saying this is okay. We're accepting you. It's okay, you know, if there are people that are gay or whatever, I don't care. But we don't add to it by saying, here's books to help you with it, too. Please, think this over, and I'm asking for you to really evaluate this, come up with a plan for our board to look over books that are going to go in the library. Thank you.
I agree.
Let me kind of address that a little bit with some information, because library has been a topic in our meetings for like the last year. So it isn't just now we've been aware of what's going on in the libraries and things like that. So just as for information, there is a process for community members and parents in the district to challenge books at each school. So that was made available in the meeting, so I want to make sure everybody knows what you can do. So there is a form. You can get it from the district. It goes to the school principal. And that is right now the arbiter of what's in our libraries. Basically, if you know the history of Lake Havasu, we do not have librarians in our school district. And that is from a while ago. I don't know exactly when, you know, it's way before our time. With that came, pretty much, our books, our book collections have just sat from what they were before. There's really not a lot of adding unless a teacher adds to it, but the principals right now are those arbitrators. This was brought by Council, you know, by Governing Board Member Niederman a few governing boards ago. And we are addressing libraries coming up soon. And how we do our addressing here in Lake Havasu is we involve the community, much like we did the curriculum process. So we know we have some issues with libraries. So the plan was, and we talked about it in a governing board meeting, is that we are going to have a community, what is it, a community? Yeah, stakeholders meeting regarding our libraries going forward in the community. So that's the thing to look forward to. So if you have an issue with a book, principal, that's the way to go right now. And then if you have a stake in wanting to know what we do with our libraries here in Havasu, we are going to be inviting and opening some meetings to the community coming up. So I just wanted to share that information, that we had been concerned about it. You know, Board Member Niederman brought it on our case or on our docket. And that's how we work. We work with communities in this one, and we want to involve anybody that we can in that process.
All right, thank you. Thank you for speaking, and we'll now move on to the consent agenda. So do I have a motion to accept it as stated?
I move that we accept it as stated.
I'll second.
Sharon Harvey?
Yes.
Erica Ron?
Yes.
Lisa Romo?
Yes.
Val Niederman?
Yes.
Don Massey?
Yes.
All right. Action items. Dr. Stone was unable to be with us tonight, so Mr. Murray is going to lead us in our discussion items. In our action items, second, reading trust model policy updates.
Thank you, Madam President. Board members, policy updates based on the most recent legislative session changes are being presented for approval. There have been no changes since the first reading that Dr. Stone was involved in on August 13, 2024.
All right, is there any discussion?
I move we accept 6.1 as presented.
I'll second that.
I would like to add just a couple of highlights. So I was able to go to the, if you don't know, our board policy is governed by the trust organization, and they hold a law conference every year. And so I was able to go to that a week ago. And one of the things that we talked about that our policy also addresses is what role AI or artificial intelligence will play in our district moving on. And the policy that we're approving is kind of a start or a starting point. It will certainly be something that we're revisiting as time goes on. As you probably know, technology is kind of one of those ever-changing fields. And we anticipate that there will be some revisions coming up. I had some good information from that law conference. Just let me find it. Okay, so at the law conference, we talked about how to make our policy kind of proactive. And so addressing how AI might be used in our schools from a teacher standpoint or staff standpoint, and then also from a student standpoint. So for those of us, I actually have never personally used a slide rule, but there might be people in this room who have. I'm not going to ask you to raise your hand, but you might, oh, wow. You might remember the transition from slide rules to just arithmetic by hand to then using calculators more often in your classroom. And I am old enough to remember when calculators were definitely frowned on as part of math instruction. Our attitudes towards the use of computers or calculators or those types of things have changed as time goes on. It is important to me, I will not speak for the other board members, but it is important to me to make sure that we're always laying down a foundation of knowledge and then using technology to assist with that. So in my calculator example, it would be appropriate to introduce that at the correct age. You wouldn't start off a kindergartner doing all of their math problems using a calculator, because they wouldn't understand how numbers work if they're just relying on a computer from the start. You have to teach them literacy, numerical literacy. And then as they get older, like fifth, sixth, seventh grade, gradually introduce calculators so that they can take off kind of the grunt work of the arithmetic functions while still advancing in their education and understanding how numbers work. So it's important to me, the same thing with the AI. I do not want that to replace the human component of content creation. It's really important that as students, you learn how to think through your own ideas, how to put them into writing or into words. And it's important that you develop those skills first. And then, as you get older, certainly in the high school age, add in perhaps some generative AI to give you kind of a starting point for something. And then you take that and add the human element of composition. So that is, I don't want to like take too long on that, but that is one thing that's important to me. And I wanted to address it because we're approving an AI policy. The other thing I wanted to talk about was our glucagen standing order. So we have something in place so that our nurses can administer glucagen to diabetics if they need it. So I'm happy about that, because I feel like it's going to have a life-saving component to it. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about were our designation of Purple Star Schools. So we are, all of our schools now are going to be Purple Star designated, which gives special consideration to military families. And that is also important to me. I moved here most recently from San Antonio, which is a big military community. You often have a transient population, because there are people moving in for a short stint in their military service, and then they are moving on elsewhere. Havasu does not have that large of a percentage in our community, but we still have students and families who are affected by military deployments and assignments. And so I am really proud of the fact that we are making each of our schools a place that offers special consideration to those families, tries to give them kind of their, you know, priority over their school assignment, and really work with them to make sure that their credits from other schools transfer here to their education in our district. That is all I had.
The only thing I wanted to just add is sometimes, you know, seeing, you know, what's the trust model and policy like that. Our policy update comes from a trust. We used to be under the Arizona School Board Association. But there was movement with some of our board members, John Masden and Kyle Niederman. They felt very convinced to move it in a different direction. And I think it has been a good direction for our district. The reasoning is, is they offer us better support than the school board district or the Arizona School Board did. And they are less expensive. So when you get better service and things are less expensive, that's a no-brainer. Those of you who, you know, hire contractors know that is probably a slam dunk, but I wanted to mention that.
Yes.
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 Val Niederman?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, 6.2 Business Services, Schools Facilities Division, SFD, JOC Contract, Nautilus Elementary, Removal Installation of Basketball Courts. Mr. Murray?
Thank you, Madam President. Board members, in September and October 2023, the School Facilities Division approved design work for the removal and replacement of new basketball courts at Nautilus and Havasu High Elementary. Design was submitted to the SFD and construction funds were pending award. The School Facilities Division and the district would engage in a joint improvement project where the SFD will provide the funding for work relating to the basketball court, damaged walkways, related fencing, et cetera. And the district would assume costs pertaining to activity surface striping, any added concrete, volleyball court sleeves, et cetera. In February 2024, the Governing Board approved construction for these projects, pending construction award from the SFD. However, funding was not approved in FY '24 due to a lack of remaining state funds. Updated pricing was submitted to the SFD, and an award for construction was received for Nautilus Elementary. The Havasu High project is still awaiting funding approval from the state. The proposed pricing and cost share breakdown is attached. Concord contracting would be procured through their One GPA contract. A not-to-exceed is being proposed to cover any change orders to address scope of work changes to either the district or School Facility Division during the construction process. The not-to-exceed for the School Facility Division would be $700,000, and the district's not-to-exceed of $175,000. Bond and/or other capital fundings will be used for the project, for the district's portion.
Any discussion? A motion?
I move that we approve it.
I move that we approve 6.2. I'll second.
Sharon Harvey?
Yes.
Erica Ron?
Yes.
Lisa Romo?
Yes.
Val Niederman?
Yes.
Don Massey?
Yes.
6.3 Business Services, Approval to Purchase Student Transportation Bus Purchases.
Thank you, Madam President. Board members, as part of the district's commitment to establish a reasonable fleet rotation, to address an aging fleet, the district is recommending the purchase of three school buses. Quotes for Canyon State bus sales are attached to this action item. We'll purchase one route bus, one special needs bus, and one activity bus. Pricing includes all requested options, preparation, service, and parts, tax, and delivery. The quotes were made through the Mojave Educational Service Cooperative. And a not-to-exceed amount of $800,000 is requested to cover any incidentals. Bond, capital, or other approved funds for capital-related purchases will be utilized.
I move that we approve 6.3 as presented.
I'll second, and I just had one question. To be clear, this doesn't change the bus routes or add to it in any way. It's just making sure that our fleet is rechanged, yes.
Correct.
So what is the age of the buses they're replacing?
So in the consent agenda, I believe we are replacing or eliminating five buses, older fleet. And I don't have that right here in front of me.
I remember it was like 2004.
They're decades old.
Yeah, 2002.
Several hundred thousand miles on them.
Yeah, and we are selling them, right?
Correct. They go up for auction.
So good.
Activity buses, since we do travel great distances, it's nice to have something that's a little bit more reliable.
Sharon Harvey?
Yes.
Erica Ron?
Yes.
Lisa Romo?
Yes.
Val Niederman?
Yes.
Yes.
6.4 Business Services, Vouchers, Student Activity Funds and Auxiliary Funds.
Thank you, Madam President. Board members, approval of vouchers for June 2024. Now, this is including now the closed encumbrance period is before you tonight. And then approval for vouchers for August 2024, which is now in this fiscal year. And auxiliary funds and student achievement, student activity funds are before you tonight for approval.
I move we approve 6.4 as presented.
I'll second that.
Yes.
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 All right, do the governing board members have?
Superintendent at first. Do you have anything in lieu of?
We talked before and we scratched it out, but I can say that next month there will be the annual bond report that I present. So that way you can see, the public can see the accounting of bond funds that were used in projects for fiscal year '24. So that happens every October, and that will happen next month.
Great. All right, do the governing board members have anything to add tonight?
I do. I just wanted to once again thank the teachers and the students for being awesome. But once again, that is not by chance that that's the case. There's been a lot of work going on in the district, and I really applaud the district's team and the teachers there relating to curriculum improvement, and we're seeing the fruits of that. And the fruits of that is the number of kids who are doing this. I can remember not in the Two Distant Paths when it was two or three, and today it's a lot. And what goes along with that, too, is having the opportunities for those students when they get in the different grades, and especially the high school grades, to continue on. Those kids that you saw right there, they are going to get some good college scholarships. And what that means is, to the parents in this community, too, not just scholarships and opportunities, and we're talking in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So the school district has raised the bar, and what I'd like to see, and I want to see this as a report going forward, I kind of want to see these numbers and present these numbers to the public of students who are taking college courses while they're here, and how that's changed over time, whether it's college courses or courses going into CTE, you know, and getting credit for those, the, you know, the, what is it, they get their, excuse me, certificate courses, things like that, and getting an opportunity and kind of looking how that's changed over time under Dr. Stone's leadership. I would love to have that presented.
All right, I need to make an announcement that our next board meeting is going to be moved due to fall break and will be held on October 14th at 6:00 p.m. Is there?
And it's a Monday, so it's a little bit.
It's a Monday night, okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
Sharon Harvey?
Yes.
Eric Ron?
Yes.
Lisa Romo?
Yes.
Yes.
Val Niederman?
Yes. Yes.
The meeting is adjourned.